In fairness to folks that are here on time, we will move forward. So with that, the Tax Department is up first.
Okay. The first item on my list for this year, and you'll see some of these things are already in progress or have been started. For the safety of staff and security, the money in the office, I'm suggesting that the office door be closed at all times, possibly some type of locking mechanism during the tax season periods. We have public that walk directly into our office while we have money out. I just don't think it's a safe measure for personnel. So I do know that Jimmy's in the process of having a new sign made for the door to let people know that it is a staff-only area so that when the door is closed, we might deter some people from just walking right in. Did anyone have any questions? Do you want me to just move on?
No, we'll go through. So Jim is looking to have that made and installed?
Yeah, I believe because of the painting process, we had something taped and we thought it would look much more professional to have an actual sign on the door.
Okay, alright.
I'd also like to suggest that, and again, this is something I need to suggest in prior to the tax season, that the supervisor letter no longer be printed but put out either in the post or online, which I know that that's already gone into play, which was great. We print just a few at the counter for people to be able to grab, but now people know that if you just tell them you can view this online and read it, and that was a big savings in printing over 5,000 of these.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I am working with training all of staff, even town clerk staff, in using not only the EZ Tax Program, which they do use for basic items, but more extensively now, I'm teaching them areas that they haven't known in the past. I don't want anyone to be held back from doing things just because I'm at lunch or I'm not in the office. We shouldn't have to hold the office back for that. As well as our school tax collection, this upcoming season, I'm going to be sure that they all know how to process a payment in our Wayne County program because that's an area that no one's been trained in but myself, and Sheila just started learning that. So again, I think this will...
So what's the difference there Peggy? You know, with the Wayne County? I mean, how is that different?
It's an entirely different program that is...
So it's a different, actual different program?
Yeah, and they upload it every year. It's paid for by Penfield Central School District to be updated yearly, and we have to run their reports and submit their payments through an entirely different program. It has nothing to do with the EZ Tax Program, which is under Monroe County.
Okay.
The next thing I'd like to do, because of the cash payments coming, we are constantly having to tell people, when they get in line, they don't realize that we only take cash at one window. So they end up at the other window. We have to say, "Oh, I'm sorry, you have to go back to this window because there's no calculator." And it has to do with being able to run another cord for a calculator. And again, it's something I have to ask Jimmy how we can get that set up so that it doesn't get in the way of our day-to-day routine. But if we have some type of calculator over at the other window, we can accept cash payments at both windows?
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah. And because of the terminal for DEC and other things, we're just trying to find a way so it doesn't get too cluttered, yeah, because we have so many things going on.
Right.
So I'm trying to get that in place. And at this point, it wouldn't matter for Town and County, but I was focusing more for getting something in there for the school taxes. We're still looking into having an additional panic button put in somewhere else in the office than where it is so that it's not just the person at the window that has access to it, but someone who is sitting at their chair if they see something that is beyond control, or even some type of a panic button that connects us back to supervisor's office without having to pick up the phone so it's not so obvious.
Obvious.
Some other way of alerting someone else to come to our office to assist us with a problem. And not tax-related, but I was going to make a suggestion. Amy, I should've talked to you about this. I'd like to see if there's a way we can offer a community board here like they have at Recreation. We have so many people who come and ask, can we hang things up? And we have to pick and choose what we can, and it'd be nice if even our offices took care of it. Some type of a community board right in the area when we first enter from the west side over here. So, yeah, and we could keep an eye on it, we could watch it, but we have so many people that want to, you know, let the public know about things or post things, it might be nice to...
Does any of the public ever? I mean, like, I always park on the other side and come in that way. Does anybody? They all do?
They all come in on that side. And I think it would get a lot of views, even for the schools when they're having their plays or their events, not necessarily, you know, everyone hanging up their business card, but we even have a lot of nonprofit that come through and ask for us to put things up.
Hey, I'm always putting the Uker stuff, that rotary?
Yeah, it's just a matter of figuring out where we can put it so that people have access to it. And if we keep an eye on it, we can keep it clean.
Well, where the newspapers are sitting and everything, makes sense. We can afford it.
Yeah, even something that we could put up so, and I think it would grab a lot of attention if people would be looking at it.
You've just got to be careful. You know, they're always cleaning it off because it gets crazy over there. People are putting pets sitting and babysitting and everything, and there's so many cards and stuff, and they take them all down, and all of a sudden, I walk in and it's like one of the things I put up is gone. It's like, what happened? Well, it got too cluttered, so we took them all down.
Yeah, so maybe what we could...
And you're only getting by upset.
We could still say, "Please, you know, come to the town clerk's office and we will put your items on the board," and then we would have like a one week or two week rotation. But I just thought...
And then we open up also the door to the door that we have on the other side, which, you know, we try to keep all that unwrapping underneath, and it doesn't look good.
No, I think it's a great idea.
And we put it up elsewhere, too, so...
So, but it was just a thought. I thought it would be nice for the residents, and I'm sure we can handle it with that process. So that's pretty much all.
Okay. And second page, nothing, no change, kind of status quo and everything. If you guys want to chat, I can identify a couple offices for you. So, thank you. In fairness to those that are on the docket here, and we'll get to you in a moment. Thanks, gentlemen. Everything else is status quo here?
Yes. Underneath the conferences, I didn't really write anything in. I am looking to see if we can find anything in regards to customer service and time management right now for people in our office, especially at these really, really hectic times. It gets hard to keep everything in order and prioritized, and those are some areas I want to look into some training for us.
Okay. All right. Board, any questions for Peggy? Okay. Thanks, Peggy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
It was nice meeting you.
All right. All right, we will move on to...
You can have it more.
We'll move on to the town clerk.
Okay. Are we doing accomplishments as well, or just priorities?
Let's hit our priorities, and then if you want to hit the top two or three of the 25, we can do that.
I've been busy. Okay, so you can see also that we kind of have a lot of priorities and goals coming up. A number of them are continuation. We are constantly working on our records retention disposition schedule, the ME1, constantly so that we can free up space in our vault, and that is also being helped with by our wafer fish project that we've been working on, which I will speak of a little later. I did bring in New York State Archive Specialist to take a look at our storage facility. This is ongoing. We still have them coming back so that they can look at both our courts and the rec center, their records, vaults. At the same time, I'm in the process of researching archival consultants, archival supplies and equipment vendors, shelving vendors, and hammock systems so that we will have before we start going into the grant process to have everything in place so that we don't run out of the time that we're allowed once we receive, if we receive a grant. So that is an ongoing project. I have scheduled, mentioned here, that we'll be doing a records archive information management service visit in Ontario County. I've rescheduled that for March 6th. I will be bringing my clerk three with me. She works very closely with me with our records in the vault, so that should... It has been suggested by our New York State Archivist that this particular site has some very good cost-effective ways to store your records, and so we're going to take a look at not only how everything is placed, but the special shelving that may be conducive to our environment. In reference to the researching of the software for upgrading records management of the FSCAN program, this came about because there was some loss of information that it was able to retrieve, but it was very difficult. Worked with a number of department heads on that. We currently use the access system, and we do need to upgrade it as well as be trained on that. And I'm working with Ann Buck on it. She's kind of taking the lead now. And we are looking at BAS, who does a lot of our computer work for us, so that is that piece. A new initiative I'm looking into, and I'm in the process of preparing an email list, there are a lot of people in town that have dogs but don't license their dogs, and we're constantly trying to figure out a way to get more dogs licensed. An idea I had was to have, work with the veterinarians and have them put in their packets for their new dogs. You know, if you get a new dog, they have packets that tell you, you know, you need to get the dog neutered, you need to get the dog vaccinated. Well, I thought we would put something in giving them instructions on how to get their dogs licensed and actually let them know that you do need your dog licensed. It's interesting how so many people don't actually realize, or at least they say they don't realize, that they need to license their dogs. Wafer Fish Conversion Project is continuing. We are in the process of getting our building records from 1985 through 1992. And what we have just recently completed, which I had in my accomplishments we organized and have completed and have back, town board minutes from 1955 to 2010, planning board minutes from 1949 to 1990, zoning board minutes from 1959 to 1994, conservation board minutes from 1971 to 1979, and then 1991 to 2013, and the historic preservation board completed from 1973 to 2013. And then, of course, I've mentioned that we are in the process of doing building records, but I have just recently, it's been delivered, building records that have been placed on wafer fish, 1998 to 2009.
We'll get you all your own individual readers so you can review all this stuff in your spare time.
I was going to ask, were you on the planning board back then?
I was. Ancient times.
And being that you brought that up about a reader, all of those items that are on wafer fish are on gold DVDs. I've done a training session for our department heads, and some have already looked into using these DVDs, figuring out this search method, or we showed them how to do the search method, and so it's been easy for them to use the DVDs as opposed to, let's say, old records that we have that are on microfilm.
Sure. Amy, just out of curiosity, how often is town staff digging into some of these 30, 40-year-old archive documents?
Well, I wouldn't say. They sometimes do, depending on the project. It's not a lot, but that particular case would be, you know, a lot of our records are archival and, you know, historic that we can't destroy. And so it's, the real purpose is for us to preserve them and not have them damaged or lost. But periodically, we have CAS come down, and Mark D come down, and Andy Cervegas come down, and look at stuff when we get FOIL requests to look back at, especially building permits for those who are buying a home that is, you know, a historical home or a home from a long ago. Passport nights, as you see, I continue to do that three times a year, and so I have scheduled with county clerk Cheryl DeNolfo our next one for April 14th. It's a Tuesday, it'll be 5:30 to 7:30. I continue to conduct the rabies clinic, and that along with our Monroe County Health Department. And our next rabies clinic, free rabies clinic will be Saturday, June 6th, from 10 to noon.
50 percent Monroe County, 50 percent outside of the county?
I do not turn anyone away that's not from county Penfield. Just nice like that. I will do my annual hiring of a student helper. She, whoever this year, he, have been great in document scanning, helping us with any backlog. And then I also share with our department heads, it's been great help for our records management, and with cash rabies, we start using that at the window when necessary, so...
Make sure you work very closely with our HR office for hiring and not hire outside of our framework.
No. We always go for a Penfield resident first, and quite honestly, since I've been here, I haven't had anyone that was not a Penfield resident. But I always work with HR to set up interviews and discuss before hiring. And I continue to give high-quality customer service, and that's a huge priority of mine. Always looking for ways to make sure that the customer is satisfied and continue to train my staff and the tax receiver staff on the proper way of customer service. If we move down to expensive government funding, the first two items, the first one, which is the purchase of software, as I mentioned, Ann Buck is working on that, so that's kind of something that I, we'll see what happens in the future, so that's just planning stages right now. The number two, which is the GPR survey for our Smith Road Cemetery, I decided to take that off the list because we are slowing down for that cemetery. It's really onesie twosies that need to, that have bought plots from years and years ago, and we really wouldn't need to use that. We have our own in-house staff that then do the proper, have the proper ways to locate areas that we can continue to satisfy the owners of those plots. As for the three and four, purchase high-density removable shelving for records vault, that's one of the items that I'm going to be looking at on my site visit in Ontario County. It's the removable shelving seems to be the least invasive, best for staff so they don't get hurt, and so we're going to take a look at that and do a little more research on that. And then, as I mentioned before, the hammock system, that's very important, especially for air quality, humidity, ventilation. You need to maintain appropriate and consistent temperatures and humidity set points so that you don't lose the material.
Okay, so you've got about one minute to cover everything else.
Okay, well, I can see here, the upgrade project, preparation of records facility, again, that is our record management for that. I am looking to have our facilities department and my town clerk staff to help alleviate the cost of that, keep the cost down before calling out to have somebody else go through our vault system. And so that's really it, priorities and goals.
Okay.
And as for accomplishments...
Pick your two top hitters.
IMS, which is our immediate mailing service that we put into effect a month ago. We've already saved several hundred dollars. It is a first-class presort mail program, and we are doing very well. Rec department also is using this service, as well as courts. And our library system has given them information and all my research documents, so they're looking into it to do it for themselves, too. It's a huge cost savings. And...
Bing.
There should be a lot of great in this...
All right, you have the rest of the 24 accomplishments. Any questions for Amy at this point? Anything on the goals or anything?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Great, great, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it. All right, we shall. All right, finance personnel, who's next in the box? Mr. Beeden is next in the box. All right, Mr. Beeden. You're on, sir.
Well, our main goal is in 2015 is our department will maintain our AA2 credit rating from Mooney Investors Services for 2015. We will be borrowing $2,440,000 for bond application out for the Parkview and Quay Village sewer project, and we will probably be getting, having to go for a bond rating when we finally have the final bond in 2016.
Can we get to the next step, Bob?
Pardon me?
Can we get to the next step as far as our credit rating?
Let's hope, let's get to AAA.
Hope?
Yeah. There's got to be hope.
There's hope.
Yeah.
All right. We're going to be optimistic that we're going to get to AAA.
As long as our fund balance is a lot better than it was the year before, and it will be. So I have hope. Continue to receive the best quotes for our insurance premiums during 2015. We just got our quotes for our workers' cap, and PERMA was the lowest bidder. That saved us some money. If we had gone to other companies, we would have to pay quite a bit more. And this year, we're putting together our quotes for our general liability insurance, and that'll be done in June. We'll continue to reduce expenditures and find ways to increase revenues during 2015 so that our 2016 tax rate will remain the same. Continue to utilize our accounting system and budget process for all department heads through the electronic versions to allow for greater accuracy in predicting revenues and expenditures. Accomplishments, again, we maintain our AA2 credit rating from Mooney Investors during 2014. During 2014, the finance department implemented a new accounting software called Logic Solutions, which allows over 15 department heads to have access every day to the system, which is a lot greater efficiency and gives them a lot more information than they had before under the old system. That system is going very well. The town of Penfield was able to prevent higher insurance premium costs in 2014 by utilizing competitive quotes throughout the fiscal year for both the general liability and workers' compensation costs. And we maintained the same tax rate of $2.64 for the last five years to accurate estimates of revenue and expenditures during 2014.
Just through the hard work of our law and finance liaison that has helped us keep it at that.
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
It works.
Personnel-wise, everything pretty much status quo, and planning on doing an intern again this summer?
Yes, the intern we received was Victoria Blatt Blatt, and she did a terrific job in helping us, especially in the technical things. She was a very, very...
So Bob, I think it would be helpful for the board just to give them a little snapshot of what we're seeing from a banking standpoint. We were kind of notified by one of our banks that they didn't have an interest in keeping our $1 million in the bank.
With all the different...
Was that M&amp;T?
No, it was Chase. They have our premium money market account, but because they didn't have more deposits, they couldn't afford to keep us with the premium money market banking interest because they had to put the collateral against our investments. And because of the Todd, Frank, Frank Todd Act?
Todd.
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 The new legislation, they have been having to maintain better accounting records on their part. And as a result, their costs is, they're starting to figure their cost is going to be too much for the municipality, so they told us it was okay for us to close the account, and I was glad to be able to give it to M&amp;T Bank. Because M&amp;T Bank has not gone through that because they're not as big of a bank as Chase, and they've been pretty good so far.
I find it kind of ironic that they didn't want our $1 million if it wasn't sufficient.
We have no accounting relationship at all with Chase Banking. I mean, they made the mistakes themselves in the $16 billion hedge fund that happened, I think you all were aware of it. And the chief finance officer of the bank said, "Well, we're too big to fail," but they are failing, and it's causing, you know, a lot of problems throughout the industry right now.
So we're working now with M&amp;T and...
M&amp;T, and we have one other bank, First Niagara Bank, that has not been coming to us with those problems either.
So the smaller...
The smaller banks we've been working with...
They're pushing it down. The feds are pushing it down, and so they're encouraging the use of smaller regional banks.
The bigger banks have to stand with the regulations by 2016, where the smaller banks don't, they have until 2021.
Right.
But eventually, it's going to hit all of us. And I think we probably, one of our goals is to probably set meetings with everybody in the town that has any banking relationships to see what some of the problems we may be facing in the future.
Absolutely.
I get that information every day, every week from you about...
Right. Just snapshots of different things that are going on.
Snapshots of that consultant that works for the county?
Right. Well, he's, it's a consultant that provides services to municipalities and financial institutions, three plus one, and so we're on their, you know, active newsletter, and so I think we just, you know, continue to keep an eye on how things are shaping up and go from there.
I have a file on that.
Is First Niagara okay still? There were those rumors to be pulling out of the...
Well, when they merged with HSBC, that was not a very profitable move, and as a result, the president of the bank was let go. But I think they're getting their act together.
Okay, that's good.
He had a golden parachute, though, when he left.
They all do.
So, all right, questions for Bob? Everybody happy?
Good work.
All right, Robert?
Thank you.
We're not AAA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shake the tree before you leave, okay?
Shake the tree before you leave, all right.
As they always say, I expect better in 2015 than 2014.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hello.
All right.
All right.
So maiden voyage for Ms. Tracy, but...
So I apologize if the information I didn't give you was detailed enough for starting out, obviously, new. I hadn't, I started with a long laundry list, and then I thought, okay, I better kind of narrow that down, and so some of the points here...
We appreciate that.
Yeah, some of the points here are things kind of near and dear. So, the first one, obviously, there had been some delays in the kind of provisions, the employer responsibility provisions of PTACCA. Those are going to come into effect barring any other further legislation repealing anything. So there are going to be some reporting requirements, new IRS reporting that'll be done at the end of the year. Right now, the resources needed, I said initially, no additional resources. Right now, the resources needed, I said initially, no additional resources. There may be possible fee from our payroll provider paychecks to help assist us, as they do with the W2s, to assist us with those IRS forms. I know that they were looking initially for us to sign on to a program, which, working and having lengthy discussions with Brown and Brown, was a little premature to sign on and have financial exposure with paychecks, paying their fees now for provisions that aren't even set and stoned yet. So we withdrew from that now, but I was assured that they would be able to assist at the end of the year with the reporting. Obviously, keeping on top generally of the PPAC provisions, there's some legislation now that's being considered to change from the full-time requirement of 30 hours to 40 hours. If that does go through, it'll alleviate a lot of the burden of looking at some of our part-timers and making sure that they don't, you know, start to creep up on the thresholds for full-time for health insurance. So that's basically a priority because there could be some financial penalties, pay or play penalties. So it's my intent to keep us free and clear. The second bullet, training and development, going through, just basically looking for some new innovative ways perhaps, internal online training to do during the workday. Training can get expensive. I know, I'm not looking at anything beyond what's already budgeted in the training funds currently. There's some things, areas of growth that I think, but starting new and going to work with the departments and what kind of a skills and needs assessment from what their employees are. That also kind of ties in a little bit with a later bullet of succession planning, but Supervisor and I talked at length about leadership training for the department heads as well. That's something that, you know, if they've had it in the past, it's always good to brush up on. We've talked about ways that we can introduce that. The third bullet, policy review, development and updates. I expect that I'll have to take quite a bit of time to review all the employment-related policies and procedures, making sure that they meet all kind of ever-changing state and federal regulatory issues and compliance, and also take note if there's any areas that are lacking. I know the workers' violence policy is being worked on right now. I had just gone through with my previous employer, the Department of Labor Audit for that policy. So I'm in a good position to address that one and it was just coincidental that it was being reformulated here as well. Again, I don't see any additional resources needed for any of that. Succession planning, the ability, again, coupled with training, the ability to promote within if we can, recognizing that that might not always be the case. I know Tony and I had some discussions sometimes when you try to approach the subject with veteran employees about their moving on in retirement, they get a little guarded. So I tend to kind of try to start those conversations about, it's not that we're trying to shove you out the door, but we are trying to be prepared for their departures. We have a couple key positions that will be coming up. One kind of close to me, Karen Mathis is the Payroll Supervisor. She's about a year out now from her, she's already stated that. So to figure out what's gonna go into the HR department with me being new and also navigating that, special attention will be given there. And again, just kind of on the personal note, is my kind of own priority in relationship building with the employees and in particular, the department heads. I had announced at our last staff meeting, and I've already started with one, but my intent to spend some time with each department head in their departments, meeting their staff, going over their kind of, you know, the workflow, but also to get a really good idea of the kind of tone of the workplace, to make sure that kind of employee satisfaction is kind of as high as it can be, because that's gonna ultimately result in more, in higher productivity. But again, I guess for this, you know, slipping into this position now, it's not going to be my intent for any drastic changes. I believe that I need to understand, fully understand what is in front of me before trying to look at any changes or recommending any kind of, you know, anything of that nature. So I think the time for me, again, my resources needed were just time and patience from people as I get kind of acclimated. So that's my intent.
The one thing I'll say is that we're fortunate that we were able to, you know, have that crossover piece with Rose and Tracy. Tracy brings a lot to the table by way of what I'll call HR framework. And I think the benefit that they had working together was the opportunity for, you know, the Penfield component. So, you know, civil service is civil service, you know, leadership training is leadership training, succession planning, you know, type of thing. Those are things that, you know, are what I'll call part of the HR director's job, but having that ability to have that crossover, I think, really makes a big difference just to help with the lay of the land so that as Tracy comes in and has been working on it, you know, it was just a very, you know, very easy, from my perspective, just a very, very easy transition. So it's worked out, worked out well. So I appreciate the board's support. Appreciate the board's support in doing that so that, so that we ensure that smooth transition.
Still, I've been a couple weeks flying solo, so.
But still, but still working well, but still working well. Questions for Tracy? I think you'll see some good things as we move forward, certainly with, you know, succession planning and leadership training and those types of things so that, you know, we continue to maintain a good solid base that we have in the community, so. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. All right, last.
We didn't have any accomplishments to go over.
That's okay. Amy's willing to share some of hers. We will, last but not least, Mr. Bylaw.
What I did is I actually have a couple things for you to add to what you already have in regards to that.
Don't overdo it, Chris. Don't worry.
If you have an extra, we could just do that, we'll leave that for Paula. Thanks.
The goals are the same as what I had sent in earlier, although now what I did was, under each one, I sort of put some specific objectives as to how we're gonna do that. So it just expands on it and kind of give you what I'm gonna go over now real quickly. First one is obviously just expanding on the programs and the opportunities, including special events. And then I added in this year, looking to partner with the library where we possibly can, not only on programs but special events. Underneath that, currently, the two that, first two bullets are, those are ongoing programs that we're actually doing where programs are being promoted is a library and a recreation program between monthly book review as well as the monthly film. They did participate last year in the holiday event at Christmas time, which was good to see that they were back, look for a larger role, not only in that event but also Halloween. And then the other piece that I did put is, we've had discussions that we're gonna be looking to ask that they have some participation in the farm walk program that we have up at Rothfuss Park. Sabrina and I talked a little bit about the fact that it's a natural sort of segue between the two, that it's an easy program for the library to get involved with and promote within their young customers.
And Chris, I appreciate that because I've been very vocal in years past about there being what appears to be a disconnect between the library and the recreation department, even though they're in the same building and down the hall. So I think in the last few years under your leadership and working with Bunny Brinkman, I think you've done a tremendous job in sort of bridging that gap and then working to ensure that that building is open to the residents when there are different activities happening. So I appreciate that, thank you.
And we'll continue to do that. You know, we've had, we've had some discussions with the library where they're looking to support from our end for some of the things that they're doing. So it's not only our, you know, our office going down and saying, I would like to be involved, so.
Well, it's communications.
Exactly.
And so, I mean, that's one of the biggest things that I've seen has been the communications piece. So I know all of us around the table really appreciate that effort.
I did want to quickly just mention these three or these special events. These are three new special events that we are adding to the table for this year, for 2015. First one is the, it's what's called the Spring Scramble. That's actually a program that's gonna be coming out here in the next, it's around two months, around April timeframe. That's gonna be an event that's actually sponsored with, working in conjunction with the PVA and different businesses. Very similar, for those of you that remember the holiday event where we had residents go and visit.
Celebrating, yeah.
Very similar to where they go around to different businesses. So that's the first one, the fall program is the next one. That's called the Tour de Farm. This one actually is a kind of a really unique concept. Steve's actually working with Woody. They've ordered in the east side to create sort of a tour de farm where it's a bicycle event where people will be invited to participate, ride from farm to farm to check and do a visit on different farms on the east side of Penfield. And then that last piece is gonna be intended to be done in June, which is the wellness month. And that's gonna be similar in nature to what we've done in the past where we've done the walking program and will continue to do the walking program in the summer. This one will actually take part in the pool. There are four dates that are gonna be programmed and set where residents are encouraged to use the pool.
High school pool?
High school pool, use the pool and try to compete and swim for what is considered the PenRec Mile, which is about 70 laps. So those are, those are three new ones.
Probably gonna get advertised.
That brings back some horrible memories.
In the spring brochure, right?
Nope, because it's gonna be, it'll be in the summer brochure. So actually, the only program that you haven't seen that would have been advertised in the spring would have been the Spring Scramble. But because of the timeframe that we got to it, you know, where the brochure was done in early December, the details weren't there. So if you're seeing E-News and all those kind of different.
It'll be advertised for that.
Yes, actually, I think it's been on the last two E-News. Be on the lookout for it, so.
Yep.
Second goal on there is the Implement the Parks Improvement Plan, which everybody has already seen. I did give you another copy that's attached to this because I did want to just mention in those objectives, the first one is the development of the QR Fit Trail at Rothfuss Park. That is the intention of where we would like to see that go. That's another program. We're sort of looking to piggyback off from the Wegmans sponsorship that we have to be able to promote wellness. Real quickly, it's a five-station fitness trail, very similar to what you've seen probably in other areas where there's equipment, et cetera. The only difference is there won't be equipment for this. There'll actually just be a post with a sign and a QR code that somebody will use their smartphone, scan it, and a video will pop up showing what type of exercise they can do without needing to have any kind of equipment. So we're looking to try that at Rothfuss and see what kind of participation we get. Maybe that's the best, from a visibility standpoint, between all the activities that are going on there. It's a very natural setting for it from a visual standpoint. The second bullet is actually something that the Trails Committee is gonna be working on. All of the parks that we've identified in that plan, all the trails, we're looking to have. Right now, none of the trails have any type of distance markers on them. And it is something that we've been asked in the past, is, you know, how far is one loop around Veterans Memorial Park? So we're gonna actually work with the Trails Committee and try to come up with some, whether it's marking on the ground, if it's a pavement, or marking with a post, similar to the rubbings like you see on the passport trail. Some type of marking system so people are aware of what the distance is around the parks. The La Salle's Landing, that's obviously one that I know is currently in the stages of looking to be accomplished, is getting some sort of a canoe kayak launch down on La Salle's so it's easier, safer for people. It'll put those, carry on top of the flotation devices in water. And then the last one is we've been working with the DPW Department and Bob Garvik in regards to deciding some of the maintenance issues at some of the parks, specifically some of the trees that are not healthy and need to be removed. And then what type of replacement plan we'll go in for some of those along with a few other, we've identified in that plan with maintenance issues, whether it's spraying or power washing the tennis courts on a yearly basis to be able to sort of save on the wear and tear and save on the coating that's on those. The third bullet is actually the one that's probably the most challenging, but I think worthwhile of all these, and that is the continuation of what we call the Penfield Sports Coalition. We started that in the fall with a preliminary sort of interest level with those groups. We had a very good response. The groups are listed there. The only one that was added after the initial meeting was we added swimming. They weren't initially on the list, but we thought after our first meeting that they should be as they impact the sports culture, especially in Penfield, pretty heavily. So we've added them. We'll be meeting next week, actually, on the 24th for our first actual meeting as a group. In that initial meeting, we developed a few ideas, conceptual type of programs that we'd like to do, things along the lines of positive parenting, regards to youth sports, positive coaching behavior, and different topics that we would like to see that all of those organizations would be able to be a part of, but this consortium, or this group would actually sort of spearhead it and promote. So I think it's, to me, it's the one thing that I think will really help sort of unionize the youth sports culture in Penfield. Anybody needs to just look at the sports paper, it's about any day of the week, today is no different with what happened with Little League, and realize that this is a topic that's pretty current and something that I think if we sort of get out in front of and take sort of a leadership role, it'll only help the culture down the road.
And, you know, Chris, I mean, I want to give you a lot of credit for taking this and running with this initiative because, you know, these sports organizations, you know, do a lot of good things with the youth in this community. Some of them, you know, can be overpowering at certain times, but getting them all together at the same table and talking about, you know, working together in common interests and issues, I think ultimately benefits the town as a whole, not only for the kids with in sports programs, but just as the community as a whole.
I think it's one of those things, Andy, that's long overdue for a lot of reasons and I think there's nothing but good that can really come of it. When we had the initial meeting back in November, I was a little skeptical if people would come in with their own agendas and truthfully. And the other thing that we did that you'll see is, that's on there, is the people that are on that committee are people that are within the organization that are in leadership roles. They're not just, you know, somebody that's been designated, there's somebody who sits on the board or if not the president of those organizations. But when they came to the meeting, everybody was sort of collective in the idea, nobody had their own agenda. So it obviously's got the, sort of the structure there. Now it's just a matter of us taking it and sort of broadening it and go across to all the different organizations.
And I know that we, as a town board, have talked about this for a year or so and I'm glad to see that it's going and, you know, with you kind of steering the ship a little bit, I think it's gonna move in the right direction and ultimately will be a good thing.
Because he came. Lastly, is the 501(c)(3), which I know you want, but you've.
That's why I continue to leave it on there. I know Tony and I have had to discuss.
I know, if you can do it, you're gonna do it.
Well, we've, actually, you know, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of remove it off Dick's plate and we're gonna put it onto PYSHAR. They've got a little bit more bench depth and they've got a little bit more resources and we need to get it off. And I finally have said to Dick, you know, we've just gotta move forward with this, Dick, because I don't know how many, every time.
He's the director, he really wants to do it.
Yes, exactly. Well, we've wanted to do it for a number of years and, you know, it was, it was kind of our end, if you will, the town's end. And now it's kind of on the attorney side. So I think if we move it into a different attorney court, I think we can have a better opportunity to move forward with that.
And then what you're doing with the youth, with the boards and all that, all get incorporated and all work together. So maybe in the long run, you know, you got, you got this all set up pretty well. And then, you know, once this is, the other part's set up and, you know, it's taken one step at a time, I guess.
I did want to just real quickly mention the park improvement plan because I know that did get sent to you. I did get a little bit of feedback when this was sent. Primarily, this came about after we did the 2012, we did the department master plan. This was actually goal number four or objective number four out of that, that talked about the enhancement and our acquisition of parks, recreation and open space. And the way it was worded was the primary focus should be to continue to enhance and maintain current facilities, fields for use. So that's really sort of the direction was, okay, how do we sort of take that, that component from the objective and move forward with it? So the thought was, well, let's create, let's create a plan that takes what we've already got in existence and either improve it, modify it, rather than have to go out and purchase new property, look for new property, let's enhance what we've already got. So this plan was put. together, and again, I put together with the internal group and myself, Lynn, Ronnie and Bob Garbeck, and then because of her interest and background within the Trails Committee as well as the Master Plan Committee, and then obviously Garbeck because of his familiarity from a maintenance standpoint on the parks. But what we really, I did, what we tried to do was identify those amenities as well as maintenance. When we went into it, we thought it was going to be more amenities-driven, what we like to see in the parks, but with Bob's involvement, it actually turned into amenities as well as maintenance because we identified, well, let's figure out, you know, what's the longevity of the playground structure that's at Veterans Memorial. When was it put in? When should it be looked at to be replaced? So, there's a plan in place now. So, between Ronnie Williams and the DPW and myself, as we look at some of these areas to focus on and we identify something that we'd like to plan for, we can do so accordingly from a budget standpoint rather than go, what would we like to do this year? Like I said, in the goal, we've already identified the fitness trail component, which is, as you look through this plan, it was identified as adding a component of fitness into one of the parks and mile markers and just giving the distances for different trails. So, people, when they're out and about, they actually know. So, there's a number of different sort of directions that we went with it, but the overall was to put together something that we can look at as we go down the road and say, okay, what do we want to focus on this coming year or next year from a budget standpoint that really would meet, this gives us something to work off. Maintenance-wise, it gives the DPW Department something to focus on when there's time, that they're looking for additional projects or have time to be able to put forth. This gives them another resource to go, okay, let's look at the tree situation that's been identified over at Harris Well and Lodge.
Are any of these things something that you could throw out to Rotary or Kuanis or anybody?
Actually, that's a good point.
I'm thinking about the Bachi Courts. Those are the Lions Courts.
Yep. That's a good point. There's, you know, that does bring up the opportunity for, you know, another organization to say, you know, we could do this piece of it or we could, you know.
Right. Because I know in Rotary, we've always asked what's the community needs and, you know, and we don't have a lot of those needs, those specific projects. But when I'm looking at this, maybe qualifications for grant monies, you know, and I know Kuanis is the same. Thoughts? Give me something, maybe I can go with it for Rotary, but we could also offer it to Anne Ratty and Kuanis.
Even though this is in the draft form, feel free to take it to Rotary and have a dialogue.
Yeah.
And at least start that.
And that's actually a great point because this is a draft. We haven't, you know, we're still looking for additional input. So, if there's anything that you see, you'd like to see added, stricken, modified or whatever, please feel free to let me know.
And you've done it. I mean, I see some points in here, some bullet points in here that this board has talked about in the past. So, I mean, you certainly have taken that into consideration when looking at amenity upgrades to Harris Whalen or Rothfuss or Sherwood Fields or whatever. So, I appreciate you doing that.
And we, this is the plan we just listed before that we really thought were, you know, the ones that we could easily identify, the amenities or the maintenance. We've got a long laundered list for each one of the parks, for each one of the areas, but we, and the thought was as we tackle these, we can slide other ones onto this plan.
Right. Prioritize, re-prioritize.
You know, Linda will remember this, but the primary focus of the update a couple of years ago was to focus on what we have, not on what we don't have. And I appreciate that you're staying true to that and kind of working with DPW and the Parks Department to actually move forward and make, enhance the parks that we do have as opposed to working on what we don't have.
Dreams, right. You don't have the one and four. Yes.
Okay. Anything else, sir? Anything for Chris?
Well, just, I want to thank you for your efforts in the last two weeks with, obviously, the Child Safety Act. I've spoken to you once or twice, and I know that you were sort of a unwanted contact or liaison there for the first couple of days just because of your, you know, position with the various youth organizations and a lot of uncertainty. So, I want to thank you for your, you know, filtering our message and putting out the facts as we, you know, had them, relay them. And, you know, as we move forward, as you know, the public hearing is on March 4th. So, as you continue to speak with Youth Council on the 24th, just let them know that everyone is encouraged to attend. Appreciate that.
That's a perfect, another perfect example of where that Youth Council really sort of has some merit within the town, that those type of messages and those type of, you know, actions now can be funneled in a quick manner to those people that, you know, that have the ability to be able to spread that information around.
How are you working with the school district? You know, anything happening? I know that, like, healthy relationships, is that happening this year again, or is that?
The healthy relationship with, there is. That's actually part of the TIC program. The TIC program has changed quite a bit in the last year, where the focus was a lot of, there was a big emphasis a year ago on trying to spread out into the community. I think what happened was that sort of got a little bit too large for them to manage. So, now, it's kind of drawn back to what TIC originally was. And that was, you know, the school district really managing any of those trauma, injury, grief issues that may come up. In the town and the clerk, they act more again as a supportive role. So, that's, that's sort of gone back to where, you know, continue to go to the meetings. You know, we have three meetings a year, but the, you know, the community focus has shifted a little bit.
Is there anything else with the recreation in the school district?
They're on the, they are on the Youth Sports Council. We do have, the athletic director does sit on that group.
And Chris meets with them on a regular basis. We share a lot of facilities, obviously, our camp programs. They're a key integral part of that program. So, a week probably doesn't go by where you're not speaking with multiple ends of.
The nice thing has been, we've actually had a very good relationship the last, the last few years where, you know, between last year and the construction issues that were over at Bay Trail and Scribner, which altered how we did our summer camp program, you know, that really was communicated to us early. This year, I was able to work within the school district and Allen McNiff to make sure that we were able to go back to those facilities. So, we've got a real nice relationship now with communication, again, to go back to what you said earlier, is really kind of open and flows between whether it's Allen McNiff, Pottnham Sham, or whoever it might be, about what's going on in the school district.
Craigman, Bielow.
I mean, we've already had, I've already had the discussion with both Pete and Allen from the school district about summer plans for baseball fields, what's going to be closed from the school complex. So, as we're, as we're starting to hear those conversations now, we're ahead of the game.
That's all good.
And Puttnham and I have picked up where Steve and I left off. And so, we have a meeting next week. I think this is our third in a series of meetings that we get together to talk about common items between the school district and the town.
Excellent. It's all good. Hey, the 1st of July, it's in the morning, right? We're still doing the 10 o'clock? We're doing that again?
Yep. And actually, you should have forwarded an email on to the supervisor today regarding parade marshals.
Yes, yeah, we have that.
You guys should have that. So, I need that feedback. You and Warren are welcome to.
I sent a suggestion.
Good.
All right. Good. Chris, thanks. As always, thanks for the efforts. Really appreciate. Yeah, if you just leave that for Paul, just slide that over to me and I'll just get that to her. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to take a quick minute break. We'll give folks an opportunity to readjust their seat locations, and then we'll formally kick off the Town Board Work Sessions. So, I'll ask staff to come forward, and we'll kick off in just about a minute. Okay. I will call the February 11th, 2015 Town Board Work Session to order. We'll let the ministry reflect that with the exception of Councilwoman Metzler, who should be here momentarily. All the board members are present, as well as some members of the staff, and of course, a number of members in the audience that we'll be getting to here momentarily. Prior to this work session, the board did hold its second round of goals and priorities. This evening, we had the tax receiver, town clerk, finance personnel and recreation departments represented, and that will be made, copies of that are on file with the clerk. Before us, we have the January 28th minutes and would entertain a motion of approval of those minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, then the minutes will stand approved as written. Lisa, thank you. Month reports, my ACE assistant is, has been out this past week in a warm place. And so, I do not have the formal list. What I can say is that I've seen a number of month reports that have come in. So, if by chance you're one of the ones that haven't gotten them in, I would expect that they would be in by week's end. We have no public hearing this evening. We have no guests this evening. We'll move right into our action items, law and finance, and we'll start with the local waterfront revitalization program, LWRP update. Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Tony. This is just merely an update. It's to let you know that we are still waiting from the Monroe County Planning Department. They have their 239M review process underway. I believe they have about eight more days to go before the 32-day period runs out and they will get materials to us. Following in, perceived circumstances with respect to what they send us, I am in the process right now of preparing the fighting statement and also a draft resolution of approval for your review, which I would like to review with the town attorney prior to moving forward. But my intent would be to get those resolutions in place for you by the 4th of March meeting. So, just to let you know that, and we'll keep you posted as we move forward, we'll get draft materials to you for your review.
Okay. I know Andy's been our liaison contact person for that, but if any of the board has any questions, comments, dot any i's crossed, any t's, get those to Mr. Costello. Would anticipate the 239M will come in, and there will not be any, anything unique that we will see on that. And then we'll get it in resolution after Mr. Horwitz has gone through his screen of that from a legalist standpoint. So, anything else, just get to Mr. Costello. Okay?
Great.
Good. All right. Very good. The next one is the incentive zoning Dublin Road, and I see Steve Philpott is here. So, please, Steve, join us at the table.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I had spoken to Steve. We had met with him, I think, if you remember, if they're one of our previous board sessions. Steve had prepared a document that he sent to identify the 32-plus units on Dublin Road, just immediately north of the Hummsford Way, Dublin Corner's subdivision.
Yep. Yep, I think, you know, that was, we had reviewed it two weeks ago, gave the board an opportunity to, you know, certainly look at the plans, have some additional dialogue. Just to refresh everybody's memory, one of the things that was being proposed was some combination of green technology, geothermal, solar, possibly some car-charging stations, looking, you know, at taking advantage of NISERTA. And I think Steve was teeing it up as kind of the, quote unquote, the first green project. And so, I think there are really two items for the board to look at and kick around. One is certainly the density. That's part of the incentive aspect. And then, what is being proposed, does that fit within what the board is interested in, in and around the incentive? So, I think that's kind of a snapshot of a discussion we had that lasted certainly a little bit longer than that two weeks ago.
I know. I'm thinking, what are we talking about tonight? I thought we sort of.
Well, we, all we, how we did is that we heard it two weeks ago, and the board did not give any further direction as to, do we like it? Do we not like it? Do we?
I thought we did. I guess we didn't see it formally enough.
No, I don't, I don't think we did. I think we essentially heard, and then the, you know, the question is on the table is, is that, again, and there may be others, but the two items that I saw were density and then, you know, the incentive component.
Right. I mean, that was what I asked about the incentive last time, and what was a good incentive that would affect the most people. Just to have a green project, to me, was not enough. It should be something that would benefit the town residents as a whole, not just people moving into one area. So, I was looking for, I had asked for some other, something that shows an incentive that would be respectful to the community. Have you?
I'm new to the whole incentive zoning concept. So, actually, part of the reason I'm here tonight is to get some guidance from the board as to what they might feel would be a suitable incentive. You would be, well, you're better suited through all your planning and development conversations and what have you, as far as what you may or may not need in the town and the guesses, I'm here to kind of ask what might be a more appropriate incentive.
Right. I do agree with Linda in about the incentive zoning. I think the location can be worked around. I think the density can be worked around, but as far as the incentive, I don't see how, at least what was offered originally passes what I would consider the incentive zoning. It has to be something of nature that is a benefit to the town as a whole or the region as a whole. And so, I think the original, I mean, the concept, I like the concept by all means. I think it's very unique, and I think it's got, you know, pretty good draw and pretty good following. But I think we need to find a different way or some aspect of how maybe you can, I think Linda mentioned, bringing the geothermal or the solar or the geo or the green technology to maybe a town facility or to a larger, you know, region as a whole. And I don't know what would be cost-effective or location or.
So, let me take, let me take a stab. Let me just take a brief stab. So, I think, Steve, you know, some of the discussion the board has had on some other incentive zoning projects have included kind of a wide variety of things. So, just to kind of give you an idea, we have, we have looked at, in one case, there was an upgrade, a remodeling of Harris Whalen Lodge. There has been a number of cases where there has been money per lot that has been identified. Over the last couple of years, where this board has historically been heading has been to infrastructure. And, you know, infrastructure can take the look of a number of things, you know. Storm sanitary sewers could be, you know, considered a piece of that roadway, you know, either updates or what have you. And I think one of the things that I'm hearing, you know, from Rob and Mary and maybe Linda, is that, you know, one of the things we've been doing is we've been experimenting with solar. So, we've got two solar applications within town facilities, and we're looking for ways for us to continue to reduce our costs, which obviously impacts the taxpayer, and looking for ways to how we, you know, get ourselves off the grid a little bit more than what we are today. And so, what I'm, you know, I think I'm hearing maybe from Rob and Linda is, is that how could we carry that green component and carry that to another aspect of, you know, the town, whatever that may be. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you, I know what that is right off the top of my head, but I think that's, that's the type of conversation that we need to embark on. The sensitivity, I think, this board has with regards to incentive zonings and why we've gone to infrastructure is, is that you don't want to, I don't think you want to put the town or any developer in a position of being tagged as pay-to-play. And so, one of the things that we've been working real hard on is how do you do it to address and support the broader, the broader community? So, I think that's kind of where this board has taken it. So.
And it just sounds like it would be a perfect opportunity for you, is you're promoting having some, a green development, to find something that we would embrace here in the town that's green, because we're always looking for green ideas and stuff like that.
I took.
And it's play well together, you know.
Projects.
I, when I originally approached the incentive zoning, let me back up a little bit, you know, everybody at this table knows that the amount of zoned, buildable land in the town is extremely limited. You know, there's no large parcels. There's not a lot of property that hits the market, and nor is there a large inventory that will hit the market in the future. So, what we as developers are finding is that we have to find these small scraps of land, if you will, relatively speaking, and try to make something out of them. And, you know, in this case. And, you know, in this case, you know, what attracted me on this site was that the Dublin Corners property here actually are typically... Is this a cluster? Do you know?
No.
Because they come in at a half acre to three quarters of an acre lot sizes, from what I can see on the map that was provided to me by BME.
Wasn't this a two, they do...
The density was, they had requested a rezoning to go to half acre, and the request was denied by the board at that time. They are a one-acre zoning district, and they built a number of units that were entitled to be developed in a one-acre zone. Some of the lots may be a little bit smaller, some are bigger, particularly some of the lots in the corner where you see the pie shapes, those are bigger, but they were not allowed to have any more density than they would be allowed to have. They were building out one acre parcels.
On one acre parcel. Okay. Got it.
And what drew my attention to that was when we were trying to, when we designed our duplex units, we were trying to create, instead of these big, you know, rows of structures of three, four, five units, what have you, that are all stuck together, we tried to create, you know, a duplex unit that was more comfortable for the occupants, more comfortable on the site, that the lot size that occupied those duplex units was very close to the lot widths that were, that are here at Dublin Corner subdivision, in that we come in at about 100, just under 125 feet per duplex building. So that kind of actually blended nicely when we, when we kind of stacked, you'll see from the drawing, the earlier drawing there, that, you know, it was a little more compatible, even though you look at a number and you say, wow, there's 32 units on the site, we really tried to do it in such a way that it didn't feel like there was a very dense project neighboring this development. You may hopefully making it more compatible to the neighbors, which we would ultimately approach, but we didn't want to approach any of the neighbors until we even had a suitable incentive for the board to consider. So that being said, we certainly want to pursue some of the green elements that I picked up through talking with some staff about the sustainability program the town would like to institute. So that was really kind of the thing that I could tag in on to, not really knowing what infrastructure needs the town really had. I looked in the general area of 250 and 441 and Dublin Road, and I, we couldn't come up with any infrastructure that would, you know, benefit the residents in that area. So again, it's more that we're looking for suggestions and ideas for that, and, you know, if it is a public car-charging station or something, we certainly invite, you know, recommendations as to locations and, you know, the number of those facilities that we might be asked to do.
Tony, perhaps this is maybe an assignment that the EEAC could take up at their next meeting. I'm not sure if there's a list of pet projects or suggestions that you and the committee have put together in the last year and a half that may be worth looking at.
It's a good idea.
I mean, we have, at a kind of a high level, we've identified, you know, some projects. You know, we've kept that, you know, fairly, what I'll call fairly high level, but, and Steve came and actually spoke to the EEAC now, coming up on maybe a year-plus ago, because we wanted to, the committee at the time wanted to have a dialogue as it related to green, you know, what some potential advantages were, you know, what some potential advantages to the town, advantages to a developer that went down that path, what kind of reaction was he seeing, you know, as builders put different packages together. They certainly will build a house whatever a customer wants, but also having said that, you know, sometimes granite countertops might be more important than, you know, solar panels or, you know, having some upgraded, another course in the basement might be more advantageous than, you know, doing a, you know, geothermal or whatever that might be. But I think, what I think I heard from Steve when he was here two weeks ago is, is that the folks that are coming in today are asking more questions today about more of a green technology or green construction, you know, whatever that ultimately looks like and what that means. So I think more residents or more home builders are a little bit more aware, sensitive to that overall. But, I mean, certainly, we could take a look at what we've got, spend some time with Steve as part of that and work, you know, work with him, you know, back with a recommendation to this board, if that's what the board might like to see happen.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, certainly. And Steve, I give you a lot of credit for bringing a proposal like this forward. You know, I like the idea, I like the concept. I think it's something that municipalities, towns are going to start interacting with developers more and more in this type of an arrangement. The one thing I don't like is the location.
Okay.
So, I mean, I kind of expressed it two weeks ago when we met, and I may not have been perfectly clear about that, but everything that you have talked about what you're doing, you know, I support. It's just this particular location I don't support.
Okay. Is it a density issue or is it a...
Yeah. No, I knew that question would come up. It's a fair question. I do think it's a density issue. I think it's changing a little bit of the look and feel of this type of an area in Penfield. You know, these are big lots, these are relatively big houses on Helmsford, and then you, you know, you put this type of a development right next to that, and I'm not sure that's really the right fit. Now, you know, and I don't know what kind of buffering would be going here, and I'm sure buffering is something down the road that gets worked out when it gets through the planning stages and so forth, but I'm just uncomfortable with this particular location for this particular project. So not against the project, not against...
I understand.
...design, how it's going to look, feel, all that stuff, just the location is what I'm not...
What attracted me to this location when the property first became available was that it's close to the 250-441 Commerce area. So for demographic that I typically appeal to, which is the 50 and older empty nester, they want to be close to services, and there's not a lot of property that's sewed that's close to that location. So that's what really attracted me to it in the first place, was its sheer similar location characteristics as my Timberglens subdivision does, which was very successful. And...
People are very happy there. I know a couple of the residents there.
Yeah, thank you.
They're very happy with it.
And so I wanted to try and duplicate that somewhere close, and this was the only thing that really came on the radar screen. So that's the reason that it was really more of the lack of anything else being available in this. That's kind of what drove the whole thing, so. It is actually, for me, it's a difficult parcel because it's very long and narrow, so it's not a conventional lot development. Even for larger lots, it doesn't lend itself to a very economical development. I'm not going to say it's not buildable, and I'm not saying that I might consider a different, you know, proposition for it, maybe within, under the existing zoning, but it certainly makes it more difficult to deliver a nice housing product on that property.
Yeah. And this is currently for sale, right?
It's under contract.
Is it under contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just recognizing Andy's comment, which I think is really helpful to a developer and the staff, is to give some, you know, give some guidance as to what you really think about this. Just to put on a technical hat for a second, the way you've got, you know, and obviously you put a lot of time and money into this, and the board doesn't want you to do that, but it's kind of a similar situation to what we're reviewing overall on Route 250 further north, where you're really not showing any facilities for turnaround for emergency vehicles, you're not showing any facilities for stormwater management, and that's just conceptual at best. But those are things you have to take into account, because it's certainly going to eat up some of those lots that you're looking at right now.
Well, the stormwater, the stormwater management, I mean, it's kind of hidden in the, in that, but there is that area just to the east of that Hammerhead, and I'm not saying that that Hammerhead is, or partial Hammerhead is the right piece, but that's where that, because I think as part of that, there are some EPod, there are some wetlands on that property, if I recall correctly, not having the overlay on it, but there are some wetlands in that area, and I think those lands have been actually reviewed by DEC, if I recall, a conversation with Mark Valentine.
One of the issues, though, is that the DC does not allow ponds to be constructed in wetlands.
In wetlands. Yeah, right on.
But that is, as you said earlier, it's down-the-road issues, but you should keep them in your mind as you're figuring about this.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Because it could reduce...
Peter talked a little bit about that last, Peter, but the buffering, yeah, that'd be, I don't personally have this problem next to Helmsford Way that Andy says, but I would want to make sure that there was adequate buffering, and that could eat up some...
We typically do, either through natural or planted elements, we like to buffer our empty nester clients from other...
They want their privacy too.
They want their privacy. Everybody wants their privacy on both sides of the fence, the trees, whatever it is, so...
Yeah. And again, I mean, don't get me wrong, the concept, what you talked about before, I support, it's just the location, which I have just...
Yeah, I wish I had more choices. That really is what it kind of comes down to, is we try to work with what's available, when it becomes available, so.
The EEAC, I was checking, the EEAC next meet's on the 25th, which is our next work session. So I could tee this up to the EEAC at 4:00 on that day. Certainly Steve would be welcome and encouraged to attend, but I would tee it up ahead of time to the, you know, to the committee and let them, you know, take a look and at least provide some initial input or feedback, if that would be helpful overall. I don't think it addresses, you know, I think there's still that piece with the density aspect, but certainly the committee could take a look at that incentive piece if, in fact, the board were so inclined.
Just an additional question and comment is, one of the reasons that we came in with a duplex unit as well was because it was easier to create a shared loop field in a common area environment. So rather than doing a detached, everybody owns their own property kind of thing and having to create a loop field for each individual unit, we were looking to share, you know, a loop among, you know, two or more units.
For the geo, for the geothermal.
For the geo aspect of it. And also, it would work well, based on AJ's recommendation, who was here at the last meeting with us, my solar and geothermal expert, was so that we could put the panels on the back of one of these duplex units, and it would, the configuration was better than trying to do individual houses. You know, that being said, if we wind up going down a maybe a different route with a different offering of incentive, of a different sort, would a detached patio home product be more palatable to the, with lesser density?
I mean, I'm certainly open to the conversation. I wouldn't sit and say absolutely not, but when I look at this, I kind of still think, you know, homes that are comparable to the neighborhood versus, you know, quarter-acre lots with patio homes or something like that on it. I'm open to seeing something, but I also just retain the right to say I just, I'm still not comfortable with it.
Gus, what might be also helpful is, because the EEAC will just purely take a look at what I'll call the, you know, the infrastructure, the green, the green concept aspect, if they're not going to get into, nor should they get into, any discussion around density and, you know, things like that. But what might be helpful for the board, because there are at least some members of the board that were not here when this, when Helmsford Way, when this subdivision came in, having that resolution might be helpful for those that were here to re-review and for those that may not have been here to at least understand what some of that history is.
That'd be helpful. I'd be happy to get that to you.
So if you do that, I think that would be great. And then I will get a short note out to the EEAC to let them know that we have this, you know, the infrastructure component on for discussion, and look to do that on the 25th, and then bring back at least some initial comments, input, or thoughts that the EEAC may have, so. Okay?
Great.
And Steve, you're certainly willing on the 25th at 4:00 PM? So it's the 25th of February at 4:00 PM?
And where was that location?
I'll be right here. I'll be right at this, right at this very table. Other questions, board, other comments? I don't want to misrepresent Councilwoman Metzler, but I believe one of the concerns that she had was the density. And, you know, I'll leave it at that. I'll let her speak to that in a little bit more detail, but I know that that was a question that had come up in her mind as well, so, just as an FYI to yourself, so. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on. The next one is the incentive zoning revision at Fox Hill subdivision. Again, Mr. Costello, and I would invite the FEDIC, FEDIC and FEDIC clan forward.
Good evening. How's everybody tonight?
Thank you, Tony. This is going to be a follow-up discussion of the last time that revolved around three issues. One issue was the request they're having to eliminate a walkway from the end of the cul-de-sac of Calley Ridge to Watson Road. We'll get into that in a second. The second one is to reevaluate the sidewalk, internal sidewalk system that was proposed for this site as well as a portion of Ashland Rise. And the third portion of that was, they are now seeking to come back to the planning board for subdivision and site plan approval for the last phase of Fox Hill, which is Fox Hill 6. And just to give you some brief history, and I did send you some information today via email, they received an approval based on the fact that there was a rezoning with incentives. You don't do rezoning with incentives anymore.
Right.
But they did get a rezoning to allow them to go from one acre to half acre lots, which resulted in them, I think it was 17 acres, if I'm not mistaken, which resulted in them being able to get an approval for 25 lots on that site. As part of the rezoning incentive, they had to pay $8,800, $8,800 and change per lot and above what they were entitled to. I think you were entitled to about 11 lots per code.
You're bouncing, right.
So they were about 14 lots over what they were entitled to. They have come back to you now because of the construction that took place. Some of their lots are in excess of 100 feet, much in excess of 100 feet in some cases, but they're coming back to you, and they talk to you about the idea that Ashland Rise is backing up to them now, and those lots are smaller. In some cases, some of those lots have two lots for their one in one or two locations. So their request to you was to be able to allow them to reconfigure the lot widths from about 115 or 120 down to 95, which is similar in nature, and even still a little bit larger than the Ashland Rise lots in terms of width, which would then allow them to have one extra lot, which would now go from 25 to 26 lots. If you look at the way that, you can't see it here, but I've kind of superposed what they're proposing over the Ashland Rise lots, and it does blend in better with them in terms of going from lot to lot on Ashland Rise's subdivision. The other thing the PRC looked at was, and also talking to Steve in Exana, planning board did require them to install sidewalks on both sides of the street all the way up to the new subdivision, the Ashland Rise subdivision. As a result of this having to be done, Ashland Rise was then required to have two sidewalks on both sides of the street going up to Ashland Rise Drive, which only has one sidewalk on the north side of the street. So they did get a waiver from, they did get a waiver from both sidewalks on both sides of the street with the exception of coming up Lynx Court.
Ashland Rise did.
Ashland Rise did, yes. But they still have to put in two sidewalks.
Two sides.
Two Ashland Rises.
Right.
Now, I was under the impression the last time we met that those sidewalks had been installed. That is not the case. They have not been installed yet. So talking to the PRC and discussing the matter with the FEDICS, it would seem reasonable that, you know, the end result is we have to maintain these sidewalks at some point in the future, so we want to be cautious as to how much we install. But we were recommending the idea of, there are currently four sidewalks properties here on the north side of Lynx.
Four or five?
Four. There are four right now.
Okay.
One, two, three, four. There's not one on the corner that goes back into Section 5, I believe, but there are four that are already constructed. Our recommendation to you would be to have them continue on... Our recommendation to you would be to have them continue on, then not build them within the cul-de-sac because the cul-de-sac is not approved and people can walk out to it. But then continue on this side, on the west side of the street up to Ashland Rise. We would then ask Ashland Rise to continue that on the west side and then possibly ask them to come back for a waiver for the east side. They're asking that they not be required to build on the east side. There are currently two sidewalks in place. One is in front of their dad's property and there's one on the corner here, but there are none others for the rest of the subdivision. They are willing to take out this portion and they've talked to the neighbor, the neighbor's willing to allow this to be taken out and put back into grass, which would then have a connection through Kelly Ridge, up through here and then on to Ashland Rise. So that's something I want you to think about as an option. And then the final thing that we talked about was the walkway out to Watson Road.
Right, right.
I was concerned that we wanted to make sure that the neighbors, or the majority of the neighbors in the neighborhood were comfortable with eliminating that for fear that if they bought in that neighborhood with the intention of walking out to Watson Road, we've kind of taken that option away from them. The Fedex did go out and they did obtain a petition. I have a petition here and I'll pass it off to the board to look at. And assets of all the properties that are in the subdivision on Kelly Ridge, they did not get five. Five of the, I think it's 36. So there are five of the 36 that did not sign. And I believe they didn't approach one or two people that were in the subdivision recognition. They probably wouldn't have signed anyway, so.
So the ones that didn't sign, why didn't they sign?
We, you know, Tony, about five of them weren't able to get in touch with the people. Well, not really out of the two. Two of them were neutral. They said that they, they took a neutral position and they didn't want to sign either way. And the other two people, we just couldn't get a hold of. It's been getting dark so early, it's real cold out and just didn't hook up with them.
Jim, I looked at the resolution you sent earlier this afternoon in reference to this subdivision and I didn't see anything in there that talked about sidewalk access to her.
No, that, you're right. That became a site plan issue when they went to the planning board.
After the rezoning.
I wanted you to see that just in the rezoning application. Because that's the one that kind of set everything in place as to what they had to do for the density and all that. But you're absolutely right. What initially happened was this cul-de-sac was initially going to go out onto Watson Road. We requested that be done.
Right.
There was a lot of fury in the neighborhood about the neighbors being concerned about cut through traffic or the potential for cut through traffic. Hence, that's why they went to two sidewalks on both sides because they were concerned about safety issues. It then got to a point where I think the board and the staff realized that it was not going to be reasonable to, you know, let that happen with the neighborhood being so concerned about it. So they did put that into a cul-de-sac setting. In doing that, they wanted to have some kind of component where they could get people out to Watson Road and that was the end result of that. So that's how that happened.
And it was, it was a planning board, it was a planning board requirement?
That's right. But what happened was unusual, normally what we would do is take an easement over the properties and put a sidewalk in the easement and walk through. The town, or the planning board thought it would be more appropriate to have this as dedicated land to the town of Penfield and we have not taken a deed to it. But on this particular subdivision plot, if it's recorded, and I don't believe it's recorded yet, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think we recorded this map. But if it were recorded, we would have to release that land back to the applicants because of.
Back to the property owners.
That's right. And that is not the case right now. I don't believe we own that land. It's still under the ownership of the Fedex man, so.
Yeah, that's right, Jim, because we still receive a separate tax.
Right.
Yeah.
The other thing I want you to be aware of is that a young lady came to visit me. She lives at 55 Kelly Ridge. She was very supportive of the Fedex not having the sidewalk through for some obvious reasons last week. She has three children and she wants to make sure that they're as safe as possible and not riding their bicycles in two or three years down to Watson Road and through it.
But all homeowners were aware that a sidewalk was going to be placed there when they purchased, correct?
I'm not sure that's true. I mean, I would suspect that as they were, as they were selling the lots off, that they would probably show the approved site plan that shows this to be the case. So I'm assuming.
Well, that would be my expectation. I mean, that would be my expectation.
Right. We've always showed the map showing the sidewalk on one side and then coming out on the watch.
Right.
And we've especially seen, we made the point on any more interest in these two lots. So they knew that there would be a lot in between the two side property lines. And that's what kind of made people a little hesitant about actually purchasing those lots. It's because, you know, they look at it at a little bit of loss of privacy, especially when you want to put a pool in and kids are bathing in there, people walking up.
There are three people that have pools immediately adjacent to it on the subdivision.
Yeah, it's, Steve, if you're, if the, if I read the petition correctly, there's 36 residents and you have 31 that support removing the sidewalk?
That's right.
And there's two that you said were kind of indifferent.
Right.
Could go either way and two that you never got a hold of.
Right.
So in a, I guess in a perfect world, there's really only one or two that may be against it.
Right. We're tweeting contact. Right.
Right. Or if they want against it.
Yeah. And we still own a few of the lots in here. You know, we still have a couple of specs.
We're, we're looking at a petition that is 90% supportive at this point. Could be even higher than 90% if, you know, if the two that you never spoke to were supportive. I guess it could be less than 90% too if they weren't supportive, but, you know, 90% is pretty high.
This is a part of a petition.
I do want to retract what I said a moment ago. It's obvious that in order for him to get a building permit, he would have to record his map. So if the map is going to be recorded, we've not taken a deed to the property. He still owns it, but we would have to do what we did similar to the Ashland Rise situation when we released that land by resolution, just so that it could be recorded, the planning board's office is being not our way in.
Yeah, I mean, big picture, the making the lot size is smaller is not a big issue to me. The, having the sidewalks on one side throughout the neighborhood makes sense. It's, and like Andy mentioned, I mean, obviously the residents are in favor of removing that sidewalk, but it was placed there for a reason and that was walkability and accessibility. And there's a reason why the planning board required that. And it's a shame that there are so many subdivisions throughout the town where there were opportunities in the past to have these kind of walkways that just weren't placed or were placed and are neglected or forgotten. I mean, Timber Glen's a perfect example where there could have been a perfect easement going northbound out of the park to Whalen Road and it was not in place. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the petition and in favor of removing the sidewalk. It's just, I hope this isn't a precedent or something that we're going to hear from down the road.
We did the same thing with Ashland Rise, didn't we? Because we were having that nature trail.
Well, but that was a different situation with.
But it's still, it was about walkability and getting connectivity, you know, it's.
But we provided, but we provided an alternative. I mean, that, the other component is we provided an alternative.
And this alternative, just walking all the way out and around down.
There is no alternative. The alternative is the residents don't want it, so there's no more sidewalk. So, you know, it's, like I said, it's unfortunate that we, you know, the walkability accessible to a large neighborhood and there really isn't that ability now to.
There is a way to get out onto Watson Road.
Sure, there's a couple of different ways.
Yeah, I mean, you can get out to Watson Road and you can walk down to like Penfield.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that fact. I'm just saying that in the long run.
This isn't cutting that out totally. You know, we're talking about alternatives. There is an alternative.
Okay. So, so where are we at? We've got, we've got at least three items that we need, we need to address here, gang. So let's, let's start with the first one. The first one is that access going out to Watson Road from the cul-de-sac that was put in place by the planning board. Can the town board unilaterally just waive that? Or does that require a planning board discussion? And I hate to bring that up in the 11th hour, but as I'm sitting there, as we talked the last time, you know, this, this board did a rezoning with incentives. Then from there, we were done and we pushed it off to the planning board. So the question that comes up is, is that what obligation or requirement is there to bring it to the planning board?
That's a good question. First of all, I don't think you're at the 11th hour. I think this is an issue that, I mean, we're in a discussion.
Well, I mean, I mean, I'm, I'm sitting here kicking myself that I didn't have the foresight to ask that question two weeks ago. But.
But that's okay. And I think that it's a valid question and certainly we could sit down with the planning board. They have a meeting.
Thursday, tomorrow, tomorrow evening, yeah.
So I can certainly talk to Mark about that tomorrow and have him talk about it at the work session.
I'm just thinking from the legality standpoint, can we just unilaterally override?
Right. The reason why it's before you anyways is because of the fact that it was going to be dedicated land to the town and certainly you had that authority. But I do agree, it's something that maybe the planning board can rationalize the situation. I'm concerned because they may not have the background that you do now and certainly I'm going to sit down with Mark tomorrow and go through this thoroughly with him to make sure that he has that information. And they may not come to consensus tomorrow night anyways. They may want more information just the way you've requested it.
Right.
But that's okay. I mean, we're in a mode right now where that's not, you know, it's not time sensitive in the sense that it's got to be done quickly. I think they're talking about the issues up here because I think they're getting ready to come back for a site plan.
So I think the other two issues, so they were, they were, right, there were, there were three, there were three items. There was that, that piece out to Watson Road. There was the discussion about the sidewalks themselves and whether they're two side, one side and where they're located. And then, and then obviously the third, the third component that is, that is, you know, within the realm is the additional lot because this board, you know, approved the rezoning with incentives. So it's this board that, you know, will weigh in, you know, either yea or nay on that. So let's, let's deal with those items that we can, you know, logically deal with. And then the sidewalk piece, while I don't think it's going to be a major issue to have that reviewed by the planning board, you know, tomorrow evening.
Is that something you should go back to project review, Commanding, because of the sidewalks and because they're always saying?
It did. And this is where we are.
That's why you have the alternates.
That's right.
It's not you, it's, it's, yeah, it's the group. All right. So which one did you prefer? Was the preferable one for reasons?
Well, aside from that issue, we'll have the planning board look at that. This issue here, our recommendation to you is that we allow the construction to occur on the north and west side of the subdivision for sidewalks, eliminating the need for sidewalks in the cul-de-sac. We would then give them a waiver from this situation here. They would then, this is their home here, they would take that out and they would take this one out. They have talked to the neighbors, I suggested earlier, and I think he's comfortable enough with having it taken out.
Because it's a sidewalk nowhere.
Right. It would just look awkward and it just doesn't fit properly. The fact that we already have four properties with sidewalks on them, it makes good sense to continue that forward. We would then talk to the developers at Ashland Rise and look at them to come to you for a waiver for that one side. I think it's two lots or three lots up to Ashland Rise Drive and then move that off.
But it would have everything, it would have everything tied in.
That's right.
I'm good with, I'm good with everything that Jim just talked about. Yeah, I think it's been vetted pretty thoroughly. I think it works for the development. Having two sidewalks or sidewalk on both sides of the street, I think really is a waste. And I think it provides the public safety that is required up there and I think it works for the proposed development. And again, as far as the sidewalk goes down to Watson, I think that the petition is very supportive. And Steve, I give you and your team credit for going out and talking to 31 residents.
In the dead of winter.
In the dead of winter.
That's right.
You know, I mean, every neighborhood has a right, everybody has a right to bring a petition forward to the town, but this petition's over 90% of the residents and I think that's a pretty convincing argument.
Thank you.
So I support that too.
Yeah, I support that too. It's just we should, out of respect for the planning.
Absolutely. And I'm fine with that. I'm good with that.
Okay. Sure, that'd be great.
And Tony, just to follow on your thought process regarding this portion of it, it might be good also for the planning board to look at the lot configuration and the lot number.
Right.
They did approve 25 lots prior to this and certainly if it's going to go to 26, they should have some thought processes.
I would, I would agree with that as well. And, and, you know, I see that as, you know, potentially an administrative process that the board has done from time to time. And I think, you know, reviewing that with Mark Valentine is the right thing to do and then get that, get that to the board, you know, for tomorrow evening, I think would be, would be, would be appropriate.
Very good.
So, okay. Other questions or comments, board?
Giving, giving up surplus land, does that require a public hearing?
We don't technically own the land yet.
Oh, Catholic.
Yeah.
No, it's on a map, but we've never taken a deed to it and he still is paying the taxes.
And he's still paying the taxes on it.
So we don't technically own it, but it's showing on a map. It's going to have to be.
Refiled. It'll have to be, it'll have to be refiled. Yeah, it's not, but it's not ownership of the town. But yeah, if it were, then we'd be having a different conversation. Yep.
I think there's 10 feet there. So we just make each lot five feet wider.
Yeah. So, okay.
And then, just going back to that issue for a moment, in the event that everybody sees fit to renew them of that requirement, there is still the issue of their offer to install sidewalks along Watson Road to tie that system together. Because I think there are a couple of gaps and they're willing to tie those gaps into place.
Right.
So that would be a good offset for losing that property.
Yeah, that's right. I would, I would agree. I would support that. Okay. Are we good there? And Jim, you'll, you'll work with, with the Fedex and with Mark tomorrow for that, for that planning board review piece?
Absolutely.
Okay. Other, other questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks a lot.
All right, guys. Thank you. That, that takes us on to our Public Works action items. And at this time, as Steve is making his way out, I would invite Jim Peake up. I know it's getting close to, you know, his, he and Mark DeFrancesco's bedtime. I'd also, I'd also invite Lynn up. Lynn is representing the Developer Fine Line Pipeline Inc. He is the, the person that met with the, with the town team here last week that consisted of Mark, myself, Mark V., Valentine, Jim Peake, the, the two primaries and Lynn was part of that discussion as well. So with that, I'll pass it to you for a kickoff and I'm sure you're going to probably pass it off to Jim for some comments.
Yes, thanks, Tony. So I'm working on the assumption that you received the email from Jim Peat and his recommendations and so on. I've also have this summary, which is about the same thing, just real quick. Six bidders ranging from a low bid of 1.688 million, an engineer's estimate of 1.962 million, and then the spread up to a high bid of 2.875. So, you know, after the bid results were read, Lynn and his group regrouped and re-looked at all of their production rates, materials, subcontractor costs. And early on Monday, communicated with Jim Peat that said they were, they were very confident in their bid price and quite frankly, couldn't see, you know, what, what the other bidders were seeing that they didn't and it was perplexing to them. Jim and I have always felt this was a very good job. We've had two plus years to hone it and polish it and go through several iterations. Soil conditions are very good in front of constructing sewers. And we passed that along to Lynn, I think, which maybe says his and his principal's mind eased a little bit. A little bit about Fine Line. I'll jump in if you want to, but they're incorporated in 2008. There are three principals, 90-plus years' experience in sewer and water main and site work. These guys come from other companies. That's why this was just incorporated in 2008. But I've worked with two of them, Lynn and another, Ted Hebda, with other companies for years and years. So they've got a good track record. One thing I like, and they reiterated this at our meeting, was that the two owners of the company are on the job every day. One owner runs the show. One owner, the other owner runs the cleanup operations and they're overseeing everything. They don't start additional jobs and get spread out. They keep things concise and focused on our project. So that was, that was good for us. They've done a lot of municipal work and they've submitted a list of references and I'll turn it over to Jim because Jim's gone through that pretty extensively.
Yes, I asked, I asked Lynn to send us a list of references and received that not long ago and had the opportunity to check with several of the, of the recent references. Town of Henrietta back to 2012, four different sewer, sewer construction or sewer repair projects. projects. Town engineer for Henrietta, John Lang, indicated that they were very satisfied with the work that Fine Line did for them. Navella engineers, Mike Chaffron, also had similar experience with them on a water main project in Town of Victor. MRB has worked with Fine Line in recent years. Last year and two years ago, sewer construction project, one in Savannah that went very well at about a half a million, and one that's just being wrapped up now on Purdy Road in Cannon Gate, which has been a, a very tough project, but nothing but, but good recommendations, again, from Greg Lottell in our office, about $890,000 project. Another project, the last one that I was able to get a discussion with the engineer overseeing the projects was with Gene Cofola from Fagan Engineering. We were going to a meeting with you on Saturday and was, and again, just over, well, about a million two, Wayland Business Park, at Leesley County, just now being wrapped up where the soil conditions were anything but good. And again, very satisfied with the work that Fine Line did for them. I also can recommend, happily recommend Lynn to you because he has also done work not under this company name, but a previous organization did work for the Town of Penfield on a previous sewer project on Plank Road, Shoe Craft Road, and it felt it went, I think, as well as it could, very well from his standpoint, maybe not so good from.
A lot of rock.
From, yeah.
A rock standpoint, yeah.
A lot more rock than, than we anticipated based on the boardings that had been done. So that's what we have at this point.
Okay. As I, as I mentioned, I had, had an opportunity to spend an hour with our team and, and Fine Line's team going through, talking about, you know, different aspects, how they were going to handle the job, how they were going to run the job, how they were going to approach the job. And I think we walked away from that meeting that they had addressed everything, certainly that was within the specifications, through a discussion with Mark and Jim and Mark V. It is our, our recommendation based on the due diligence that's been done by MRB and our team that we recommend to the board that we award the contract to Fine Line. To give you an idea, right now, they're, as Jim and Mark had indicated, they typically do not start any jobs until they've gotten jobs buttoned up. If, if we award them the job at our next meeting, which is next Wednesday, that will have them start to do their, their next things as part of the, that effort. So they'll get final contracts, you know, together and signed off. They'll start to go through and set up their, their schedule. They've got a tentative schedule right now that will start in the June timeframe is what they're looking at. And they'll have a, they'll have a timeline. This is, you know, a, a two, what I'll call a two-season project that they'll be working towards. And, but they'll be looking to start that job, deploy material and start, start the project. They won't put all the material out, as you can imagine, you know, you've got, you know, some number of feet of pipe, thousands of feet of pipe and, and manholes, but they'll, they'll be just enough ahead with that. So they'll just keep the project moving along. There's an element of digging, there's an element of boring as part of this project. And so as they go through, they will be working this, you know, this project, you know, with the completion in 2006, final 2016. One of the, one of the items that I think is important to mention because there was, there was that, the spread, you know, within the, the pricing, you know, certainly one of the benefits that they have is they've got a stockpile of topsoil that they have the benefit of drawing from. So as you take a look at the detail, they were able to, you know, certainly cover that aspect of it and not have to do that with as much dollars associated with that based on, you know, that benefit of the topsoil. And so with that and with the recommendation of the engineering team, I would recommend to the board that we award the contract to Fine Line and would entertain any.
Tony.
Questions, comments otherwise.
Is this contract subject to the standard contractor's questionnaire?
It is. It is. And, and I think we've gone through and.
Has that, has that been?
Well, I, I won't speak for Mark, but I, but I think that was part of the, part of the.
It is part of the contract documents.
Yep, okay.
Which will be.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Thank you for that, that reminder. Other questions, other comments?
No, I mean, I, I think this has been vetted pretty thoroughly by the engineer and by our team and certainly, you know, with, with Fine Line spending a couple of days to make sure someone didn't put a decimal point in the wrong place.
We, believe me, I drilled the job four times between Friday and Monday to just say, is there anything that we're not seeing that?
Yeah.
You know, and, and we're very confident that we looked at it right. Our subcontractor to do the boring unfortunately gave us a much better price two hours before the bid and we cut $200,000 out of our number. But legitimately took it out because his price was that much better than the other people.
Yeah.
And I know it's a contractor that has worked in the Town of Penfield, very familiar with the ground conditions. He's done work, I believe, with MRB in the past. And he actually was out here with a set of prints before the bid, calling me, asking me questions. So I, I'm very confident that he, he did a diligent job of looking at his end of the work prior to giving us his price. And he, in fact, we asked him to give us a letter to that effect because I felt that was important to back up and see that in writing, that he understood the plans, the specs, the scope of the work in it. He's comfortable, he's drilled for us on several other projects, doing similar work, drilling online and grade like needs to be done on this. And I'm confident he can do his phase. You know, if not, I'd have been right around Jim's number. But, you know, we, we felt when we got that legitimate price that it was, we don't ever know what anybody else's numbers are until the bids are open. And we put together a number we're confident in when we turned it in. And we said, you know, if we have a legitimately better price, then we, you know, if we want to beat the low bidder, we have to take it off and give the town that advantage too. And, you know, it'd be nice to have the 200 grand in hand, but, you know, the, the right answer is, is that we're confident they can do their end of it. And we felt it was the right decision to remove that dollar value from our bid that we gave to the Town of Penfield. And, you know, we don't like the spread any more than anybody else, but this is work that, that we do every day. We have the equipment in-house to do the work. We don't have to go outside and rent anything. And the ground condition, I mean, it's, when you go up and drive through a lot of that area up in White Village, it's, it's a very, I think, well-designed, very logical approach to the construction end of things. There's, that's why I just drove around and said, why, why is everybody scared of this? Why is everybody's numbers reflecting a higher degree of difficulty than what we see it at? And after, after driving it four more times and, and looking at all our numbers, making sure we didn't miss some material, you know, scope of thing, or, we're very confident that the, the way we looked at it is right and that we can do the project in a timely fashion for the town and still be able to make money at it. And if we didn't believe that, we would have said we made a mistake and Monday said, you know, we, we screwed up.
Right.
But we do not think that that's the case. And, you know, we, the job that we just finished in Wayland, there's not a tougher job I've ever seen. And I've, I've been doing this for 38 years and some of the worst ground conditions I've ever seen in the whole eastern U.S. And we were able to get through it. And, and the ground conditions up here are not like that. We had pure running, slop, goo.
Still.
That you, that you could bear.
Are those technical terms?
Yeah.
I try to be polite about it. The, the actual infield terms were not nearly that nice.
My kids would love to play in that.
We, we've worked, you know, we have a, you know, a group of nine to 10 people that we keep, try to keep busy year-round. We're not a, you know, a 100-person company where who knows who's going to be there. Just like Mark said, that owners of the company are going to be on the equipment, on the site every day. I'll be there virtually every day. I do a lot of the project management stuff, so I have a lot of paperwork, which you can't always do in your pickup. But I'm generally there every day. I'm going to make sure that the drillers are doing their work in accordance with Jim's plans. And we felt confident this can be a good project for, you know, as I called it, the whole team, the Town of Penfield, the engineer and us.
Well, I'm, I'm glad that you said that. I'm glad that, Mark, you pointed out and Jimmy pointed out that the owners are on-site because, I mean, this board has been very sensitive towards the, the public relations side of this project. And, you know, you are going into a residential neighborhood.
It's going to be everybody's yard.
Yeah, and.
That's tough.
And I, I just hope that you understand that, and I, I say this a lot in different, different ways and different examples, but, you know, what's going on in, in that individual resident's front yard is the most important thing, you know.
It could be the most important thing. I'm a homeowner too. I, I can tell you, I've had construction projects where they've dug across my property and that is how you feel.
It's unnerving. It's unnerving.
That is how you feel.
And so, you know, this board would hope and quite honestly would expect that between Mark and the engineer and the owners that are on-site, that they would take into consideration, you know, when a neighbor comes out, take the time, let them know what's going on. And you find that communication solves a lot of problems pretty quickly. Just let them know what's happening. Maybe let them know ahead of time what's happening. If they have any questions or whatever, answer the questions, be honest. You know, some people aren't going to like every answer you give them, but as long as you're honest about it, at least they'll appreciate that. And just understand that the residents are going to be inconvenienced, you know, hopefully as little as possible. But with any construction project, there is an inconvenience. It's just a universal nature of road construction or sewer construction. And that your guys and your team just has the courtesies towards the residents that, that we would want. And at the end of the day, that's, that's better for them too because, you know, gets the project done quicker, gets everybody a little bit more on the same page. But communication, public relations, I think this board would hope that you, you and your team would, would embrace.
Or, I think, talking to other engineers, I think you would find that, that, you know, our people are polite to the homeowners. And, you know, we tell most of our guys, if, if you're a common laborer and somebody has a question, head them over to me, head them over to Ted, so that we can answer them with something that's going to be a legitimate answer. What I don't like is when one of the workers or a truck driver answers a question that they shouldn't even be fielding the question.
Right.
Get them routed over to the supervisor. Then we can look at it. And if there is a question, like you said, if somebody has an issue that they're not happy with, my call's going to be to get Mark out there. I've worked with Mark in the past on other projects and I don't think we ever had an issue that we couldn't work out.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, they were, you know, it's always give and take, but we were always able to make that happen.
Great. Well, I, I would appreciate that and I think the, the rest of the town board would too, so.
And our, our theory on this when we get done too is there's, how many laterals? Is there 100?
175.
150, 170 laterals? We're going to knock on all those doors after we do this project and try to get that work to tie them into the new sewer. You know, we don't do our jobs in, in the beginning phase of this. We have no choice, no chance at that. And that's, our whole mindset is when we get this project done, we want those people to be happy enough that they want us to do their lateral from their house and sewer.
Good.
Now, because that's, we do a lot of that work too. It's, it's not the public work, it's private work. But, you know, that's, that's good work for us too and we can make money at that. And if we can keep that relationship good with the community going in and doing this work, that lends itself real well to getting the second phase when they're tying in.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay.
May I, may I mention one other, one other thing? As, as a part of this project, there, there is an opportunity here for, I won't say damage, but for issues related to our construction that will affect the potential integrity of the water authority system in the, in the area. As part of our, our work to arrange the project and coordinate it with other utilities, we had several meetings with Monroe County Water Authority. They requested that we place in the contract, the bid form and into the contract documents, items that would permit the contractor to do water authority, limited water authority repair work or replacement work as asked for by the water authority at their expense and to run those, those repairs through the town's contract. The water authority has been made aware of the prices that Fine Line quoted for those items of water authority work. They, they're satisfied with that, satisfied with Fine Line's ability to do the work. So at a point probably subsequent to the potential award of this project to Fine Line, there will be an intermunicipal agreement prepared by the water authority for review by the town board that would, that would finalize those details. If the town board chooses not to proceed on those items, the water authority has other ways to complete the work, either using their own contractors or their own forces. But it is, it would be beneficial, we think, to all parties to have this contractor who's on the job and in control of the stakeout and the, and the continuity of construction to be, to be permitted to do those, those elements of work just as a matter of efficiency. So that would be, it's subsequent to, to any award and outside the scope of the award that you're being asked to do right now, but it will come to you probably within the next month or so.
So it's good, good discussion. It's good to have that on the table. I think we went in with the idea that, that was a potential component, element of that. And my, my, my recommendation certainly would be to the board that we seriously consider having that be the case because you, you potentially enter in another contractor and you always run into the finger pointing, it wasn't me, it was him, it wasn't him, it was me, I mean, you know, type of thing.
Oh, and time delay too. I mean, there's the continuity of times.
The project we're doing just before this is the Town of Pittsburgh Water Main for Monroe County Water Authority. So that's, we're going to be going there at our next job. So we're coming from Monroe County Water Authority's project, two-year project.
So.
So I think that's a good interface too.
Sure.
That, you know, we do work for them and, and they've been very happy with what we've done for them.
So it's possible to get passed through our contract directly to the water.
Right to the water authority. Yep, makes, makes sense. Very, very common practice. Okay. If everyone's okay, then Mark, I'll ask, I'll ask you, because you're the only person here. Next, you're representing the engineering department because everybody else is someplace where it's warm. You've got the, the ball to prepare a resolution, get it in, and we'll have it before the board on Wednesday. So.
Were you voting on this next week?
Yes. And so it'll be before us next week. Okay? Everybody's good?
Yep.
Great. Excellent. Jim, thank you, as always. Lynn, thank you for, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, it's a little ratty out there. Yeah, I love a little bony, but it's, you know, it's, it's a half an hour, 35-minute drive, except it was a little ratty on the way in. But that's how it is.
It's winter in Western.
I was just going to say, if everybody just recognizes it's winter.
I thought today was a nice day.
Thank you for the board's time too. It was actually kind of interesting to hear you talking about the planning board stuff because I've never sat in at a board meeting listening to all that stuff go on. So it actually is kind of interesting to hear that.
So.
Not that I want to get into politics. I think you guys can handle that. I'll, I'll stay with digging the digits.
Thank you. But thank you for, thank you for coming in. Jim, thanks for coming in. And Mark, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right? Okay. That takes us, that takes us down to informational items. And we've got law and finance. We have a request for extension of ours for Jeremiah's outdoor dining area. Mr. Costello, any additional comments who are?
No, other than the fact that Tony and I had an opportunity to meet with Jeff Ruddish and Julie Anker the other night and the other morning. And they and Julie Angler the other night and the other morning, and they had requested input from us as to our feelings regarding them coming back to the board to extend their hours. I did send you the resolution that talked about the hours extended from the last time out. There was, I had actually talked to one of the neighbors who was aware of the meeting tonight, saw it on the web, and just called me and said, he thought initially that it was a one-year grace period from the time that we approved. But if you read the resolution, the last page of the resolution talks about the fact that it was, it was going to be determined based on the applicant's track record and your determination as to whether or not they should come back. So we're talking to them. They would like to come back. They recognize there would have to be a public hearing on the matter. Certainly we would invite all the neighbors to the public hearing. I did have a list of complaints that had been, I'd received over the last, you know, since they opened. I have forwarded them on to Jeff Reddish, so that he can go review them and determine how he can resolve issues if he has to. Most of the, actually, most of the complaints were centered around the refuse solving issue.
Yeah, I was going to say.
No, most of them were, I was surprised to see that when I went back, because there were several.
Yeah, but there was the football games, too.
Yes. Oh, not a question. But I, I was surprised that when I went back and saw it was, it was a refuse issue, whether it was. But in any event, they recognized, they took care of the refuse issue with Cleanway. I've talked to Cleanway, and I haven't heard any complaints since we did that. But they do have all the complaints. And the question I have to the board is, are you, are you supportive of holding a public hearing to review the comments?
Do we have a, no indication though, because, you know, they opened so late that they really had a summer of full season.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's why. And the original wording was going to be a year, but you changed it to allow for, and if you read the resolution, it says that you determine there's an adequate track record. I don't know if you did or not, but...
The, the resolution, I think you sent us was the addendum to, to number seven.
That's right. It's like the last, it's like one of the last items on the...
But what did, didn't the original resolution say a season?
You know, I didn't look at it.
I didn't either, but I, I thought it was something language about one full season or some, because...
Because they were so late.
But I think it was modified in this resolution. If you look at the last, I think it's the last page.
Okay. It is, it is the last page, but I think, I think, I think, just to make sure that nothing is missed or assumed, I think we have to, I think we have to go back to that original resolution, because I do, I do recall there being the discussion around having a full season. And so when we amended, when we amended for this, was that full season taken out, or was it, or was, or was this...
If you read that wording, it was taken out. Because the full season was never going to happen last year.
That's, that's correct.
Full season was going to happen this year.
But, but I think some of the discussion, I think some of the discussion, and I, we'd have to go back and just kind of watch the original, but I know that, and I want to, I want to say it was, may have been Paula that had, you know, talked about the fact that wanting to make sure that we had a, you know, a kind of a full season to view, you know, what that, what that was. So not, not, you didn't have just a couple of months, but you had truly the full season. So full season could be, you know, roughly, if the weather's nice, April-ish, you know, to October-ish type of thing.
I agree. I mean, it's, it's not necessarily, in this case, in my mind, what's in writing, but what the perception is. And I'm sure we talked about a full season, and I think that they opened up after Labor Day? When, I mean, after Labor Day is...
I think it was, I think it was like in...
Well, yeah, going beyond the wording.
It was before Labor Day.
Was it? Okay. Well, you're looking at five weeks out of a five-month.
But I think that was the rationale as to why we changed it, because we said they would have to go until 2016 if you looked at a full season.
Yeah, regardless of what we, we think, you know, they can still do a public hearing to ask that we, they continue having outdoor.
What I will do is, tomorrow I will send you that original resolution. I probably should have done it in the first place, but when I read that word, it kind of superseded what we did in the first resolution. But I will get that to you for, just for review. You do make a good point. I mean, whether, I mean, they could have the public hearing and the whole come on and say, you don't want it. You gave them the opportunity for a public hearing.
Yeah, I think it would be good to, I think it would be good to, to have that, you know, to have that resolution. Obviously, they haven't even made application. You know, at this point, the, the discussion, the discussion was with Jim and I to say, this is, this is what we're thinking about. We said we'd bring it to the, to the board to at least make you aware of that. So I, I think it would be good to take a look at that resolution, and then, you know, we can, you know, we can go from, then we can go from there. But, and we, and the board can decide whether, you know, we accept the resolution or not, except, excuse me, accept the application or not accept the application, too. And, and so that, and, and if we elect to accept it, certainly you hear it, and you don't have to, you know, act on it either. I mean, that's the other, that's the other component of that. So.
Okay.
And you did, you did share that information with, with them of the noise complaints that did come in, so that they had an opportunity to see what those were.
I see the wrong way. I say bigger than...
Okay, great, great. Okay. Anything else, board, for that?
No.
All right. Then that being the case, and nothing else before the board, then the meeting for February 11th will stand adjourned at 8:32 PM.